...Justice Reese Kevin. This is our special meeting.
It's called to order, roll call please.
Trustee Williams here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee McMullin. Trustee Payton.
Here.
Trustee Brown. And here, Cuthbert.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order, roll call please. I'm sorry, I was just saying, I'm sorry. General public, comments, we have any?
None.
Hearing none, move to the next item. Action item D1, first, second, and third reading ordinance of the Village of University Park in Willencook Counties, Illinois, authorizing the sale of disposal of surplus vehicles owned and by the village in University Park, Illinois, Willencook Counties, Illinois. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Brooks, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson, comments, concerns, questions? Question? Um, go ahead, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'll allow you to catch your breath. Um, just, who? The items that we have, where, what type of vehicles are these, where are they coming from? How long have they been laying around?
So, may I answer that question? Those are surplus police vehicles, asset forfeiture vehicles that the village, the police department's had over ten years. They were located at one of two storage lots that we store our excess equipment. One of the lots got sold to another owner and the tow company refused to continue to store the vehicles. None of the vehicles are operational, all the vehicles are rusted out, and actually they're long overdue for being disposed of. What we did was we dig over all the disposal approvals that the board has done over the last two years, cross track those, and the vehicles that are on that list are vehicles that were not included in the past.
Are these any of those vehicles we had from the grocery store episode when a guy got placed in jail for all the vehicles?
No.
Any of those? Okay, they're all done, though, anyway.
Those are, okay, thank you.
All right, how much are we estimating to receive from these?
About sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred dollars?
Or close by six thousand.
Six thousand. That's good, thank you, thank you. All right, trustee Williams, do you have your?
I've got it.
Oh, I need it, oh, okay, thank you. Any others? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Payton.
Aye.
Here, Cuthbert.
Aye.
Trustee McMullin.
He says aye. Sold the vehicles, selling all the vehicles.
Aye.
All right, ayes have, thank you.
Let's hear it. Yes. What is this? Oh, twenty-nine, two zero four.
First of the year. B, I'm sorry, D. Yes, ma'am. Oh, was this one now or later? You want this one?
It's okay, go ahead, proceed, I'll do it next time.
No, 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 we can, it just came to us, you can come up and speak.
Mayor, trustees.
Good evening, sir.
Um, I'm Mr. Christopher Humes. Oh, sir, Christopher.
It's right here.
Christopher Humes, residence of Roseville.
Yes, sir.
Also commission of the fire and police board commissioners. Still looking for manuals, it's been almost two years now. That's pretty much what I wanted to say, I'm just kind of concerned again, as when I came up here the first time last year, I want to be, since we being new and being two years in, I want to kind of be a, it has an effect of a committee member, as far as on this prestigious committee that you gave me an opportunity to be on. I've been told that they're coming, they're coming, they're coming. I'm starting to feel like it's not an issue, it's not a concern, so I'm just going to bring it up this second and last time, I'm still waiting on manuals, we didn't get any manuals prior to training we went to, so that's just my thoughts, my concern.
I apologize for that, I know, we'll get an answer to that, because you've gone to two trainings, not modules, haven't you? I know they have talked to me about the modules, and it's been two years? Okay, our, can someone, I'm sorry, trustee Brooks wants to speak.
Yes, mayor, I did have an opportunity, Commissioner Humes, when he told me this at the Christmas party, I was kind of thrown, because he should have had it by now. I did get some, reached out and asked, Sue Sanfrentello was the one who did ours, so maybe I can talk with the clerks, from my understanding, Madam Clerk, I think Sue took one manual, like the thick book that they would have, had that copy, and then our ordinance, the one, the smaller white one he should have, I think she kind of had that also done by a print shop, so if we can just get the most up to date on both of them, is that possible? And, because it's five commissioners, right?
As it stands, it's been three of us, I, it's to my knowledge that Mr. Hooks was very ill, we haven't really heard of anything as far as for him, Mr. Love Lace has been no show.
As I get.
Don't want to speak to him, so as far as I'm concerned, this is me, Chairman Young, and Bobby Greer.
Yeah, I gave Commissioner Hooks my last, my, the small white one, so that was the advice that Sue Sanfrentello advised that she did and had it made, so maybe if we can work something out between now, maybe, I don't think it would take no more than a month to get it done, and that would save on giving, because if I'm not mistaken, if we paid for the manuals that they do need from the Police and Fire Commission Association itself, that's almost like a hundred and some odd dollars a pop. Yes, well, yeah, so I think we can get a print shop to do what they're asking for, if we can.
And as I understand it, this is what, um, this is what we had talked to the chair about, was ordering one book, and she hesitated, and told her that she wasn't in agreement to this, and then I was later told that in one of the training sessions that we're going to, that the manuals were to be included and given at that workshop, apparently that did not happen. I will speak with Jocelyn tomorrow and see what the status is on that.
That's all I can ask, like a simple.
And I promise, I will, I will check into the manual, and I will get back to you.
And you left your phone number, I'll follow up with you, you don't have it in two weeks, do you think, Clerk, do you think?
Well, I don't know that process, because I really don't work with the process itself, but I will check into it first thing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk, do you have it? We'll make sure you get it before Tuesday, no month. I actually have their copy.
She won't have it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Humes, bringing attention. Okay, um, motion to D, when we were going over, motion to authorize the vehicle, oh, I'm sorry, village manager to direct JMA Architect to design facilities and publish to competitively bid the Village Hall Relocation Project Town Center. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee. Um, God, no, that was, Milton, Milton Payton and Mr. McMullin, second by McMullin. Questions, comments, concerns?
Question.
Yes.
Um, you said these people are supposed to give us a bid on redoing the village?
No, it's here to direct the village manager, JMA is architect, we've had them forever in University Park.
Okay, so I'm saying, what are they going to be doing? Are they just going to?
They're the architects, no, they're the architects, they do the designs, architects, yes. Architects. Okay.
I'm not finished.
That's what you do, you should explain first, and then after you explain, I have a question.
Okay. I asked for a question.
So to explain, this project is funded by the settlement that the village entered into with Clorox, so.
Back in August, everyone, just for the record.
Back last year, in 2018, and this has been in the works for some time, we want to make sure that we transparently competitively bid both the town, both the Village Hall as well as Youth Development Center, which are two projects that Clorox agreed to fund to remodel. For clarification, the current Village Hall that we currently reside in has a lot of structural issues as well as other issues that are longstanding. It would be more advantageous to relocate the Village Hall into the Town Center, number one, to revitalize the Town Center and increase traffic, and the same would be for the next agenda item in regards to the Youth Development Center as well. So this will be, JMA will literally be doing the design, they will be publishing it, the village clerk and myself will be opening up bids, the board will approve the most responsible bidder based on JMA's recommendation, and JMA will be supervising and managing the work that's going on over there, so basically JMA will be managing the project from inception to completion.
Okay. All right, this way. Trustee.
With the other, you, you had came out and said that we've been having them for years, how many years have we had these?
I've been in the village, it was JMA Architect, I mean, off and on, we don't, that's just how many we refer to when we have architectural design, which we haven't for a long time, we haven't had anything, so.
We haven't had anything, have they done any architects for us?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
What is it that they have?
I would have to go back in the records or ordinances, but I know Mr.
JMA is designing the police department, JMA designed the fire department extension that's connected over by Village Hall.
Okay, that's his one.
Okay, no worries.
Information.
Yes, no worries.
Trustee Wilson.
Prior to it, the design going out for a bid, will the board be able to see the design and have some input about the relocation and what it's going to look like?
Not a problem, that's not a problem.
And the same question will go for the Town Center, the Youth Development Center.
So at the end of the day, the answer to your question is yes.
We will see the bid requirements too before.
Yeah, you guys will see, you guys will see all the documentation, anything, before anything can proceed with the project, before we can select a contractor or anything, has to come back before the board for review and approval. Now, the Youth Development Center already has plans that have been drafted, and actually the Village Hall has drafted plans that JMA did, and I can forward that to the board if they'd like to review those plans.
Yeah, um.
I'm sorry, trustee. So you're saying that everybody that we hire, we do get to see the blueprints before, is that?
That's correct.
And approve them.
That's what I mean.
Yes, ma'am. My question is, why do we have to direct you to do that? I mean, that's something that maybe things, I know things have changed, I get those all the time, however, the clerk is always, when there's a bid, the clerk basically does the bids, the seal bids and the, for her to her, so.
Clerk is still will be doing the seal bids and opening up the seal bids, all this is, is their, JMA is doing the specifications, they're drafting all the technical specifications that's required to be published, the village clerk is still, the bids are still being delivered to the village clerk, she is still opening up, opening up the bids and the open bid process, she is still documenting them, we're still bringing them to the board, so we're still following procedure as far as the village clerk being involved in the process. I think this is just more of a specialized situation where the article and the publication has to be very specific how it goes out based on the specifications of the project.
Okay, but I'm saying, as the village manager, don't you do that anyway?
The board has to direct, but for something like this, you all have to direct me, such a large project like this?
Okay.
You all have to direct me to do that, you know.
Okay, didn't they also say that they would do something to our, the barn?
They did not agree to do any work.
Okay.
At Regal Farm, we did attempt to have Clorox do work at Regal Farm to rehab it, and they denied that request.
Yeah, they're not, okay, all right, so, it's understood, trustee Wilson, that we will be everything step by step, when the bids come in, once they're unsealed, they're brought to, and then they will, we'll see every step by step, so the board will look at it, the board will approve it, if they don't like the way it is, we'll have input, so.
It's a capital project, I can't do anything without the board's approval.
Okay, I don't think, all right, any other questions, comments, concerns, um, to D2, hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Williams. Aye. Trustee Wilson.
Aye. Both aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both aye.
Trustee Payton.
Aye.
And here, Cuthbert.
Both aye. D3, motion to authorize the village manager to direct JMA Architect to design facilities and publish a competitively bid for the Youth Development Center and Town Center, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Brooks, second by trustee McMullin, comments, concerns, hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks. Both aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both aye.
Trustee Payton.
Aye.
Both aye. And D4, proclamation of the Village of University Park, Willencook Counties, Illinois, recognizing January 20th, 2019 to January 26th, 2019 as a school choice week, is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Brooks.
Second.
Second by trustee Wilson, and this was, came, this is something that came through our organization, after members and managers, that I don't think that we've ever even done this here, so, they shared it with us, and most villages are doing it, I shared it with our villages. Okay.
Come here.
Yes, sir.
So, one. I really, you know, I read this thing, and I really don't see the purpose of it, it just smacks of me of the past where, you know, they wanted to maintain segregated schools, and so they used this, these buzzwords about choice, and, you know, and also for, to gut the public schools, but the resolution itself, the proclamation itself, doesn't really say anything, and, you know, I just don't see the purpose of it at all.
I'm just sitting there, sitting here just right, and I always write. Start, just roll with the, okay, any others? Roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both aye.
Trustee Payton.
No.
And here, Cuthbert.
Aye. Okay. Um, D5, bills payable?
Clerk D, there are no bills payable.
No, I spoke with the fire department, and I was just all in the theater, and I have the bill.
Right, sir.
And then, they didn't have any.
Okay, as we usually get, when we come here, that's fine, okay, thank you. At this point, I make a real motion to adjournment.
So moved.
Moved by trustee, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, the bills payable.
You don't care what's on your bill?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Wilson, second.
Second.
Trustee Brooks, roll call.
This is a motion to pay.
No, it's a call back. Listen, we don't have.
Okay, next meeting next week.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, down there.
On the, I'm just, I just.
Motion that bills payable is payable until next week.
Okay. Which is the date, January 22nd. Okay.
Not a good, not a good.
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, since there is not a bill, and I want to make sure, this motion should be to the board of the issue.
Okay. Okay, so we'll continue the motion to both.
Well, this is what we've done in the past, when we didn't have something, we put table, but then we either want.
He made a motion, he's still got the motion. Okay.
He has the motion table.
Okay, still has. So I feel, okay, roll call.
Trustee Williams.
Both aye.
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Both aye.
Trustee McMullin.
Both aye.
Trustee Payton.
Aye.
Both aye. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Brooks.
Second by trustee McMullin.
All right, thank you. All right, now. Reschedule meaning company of the committee of the whole, Tuesday, January 15th, 2019. This call to order, roll call please.
Trustee Williams.
Here.
Trustee Wilson.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee McMullin. Trustee McMullin.
Roll call.
Present. Trustee Payton.
Here.
Trustee Brown. And here, Cuthbert.
Present. General public, we had done earlier, do we have any more?
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
General public comments, Ms. Parks.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
One question or comment is regarding on-street.
Name, Ms., she says, your name.
Amina Parks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, my question slash last comment is regarding on-street parking throughout the night into the wee hours of the morning. I know way back when there was an ordinance, and I believe that there still is, I'm not sure if it's being enforced, but I just wanted to kind of bring it to the groove, because it's kind of a annoyance on my street, especially when people have small businesses and they keep their big trucks parked on the street, and it's hard for me to get in and out of my driveway.
And what street is that?
Amherst.
Want to speak to that?
Yes, we do still have an ordinance that prohibits parking from 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. in the morning. As far as trucks, you're speaking of like a tractor-trailer type truck?
No, no.
SUV or pickup truck?
Something with a snow plow, it's like a diesel.
Okay, some type of pickup truck.
Yes.
Okay, then yes, there's no parking on any street between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., and that's every night, unless you call for some sort of exemption, and that has been approved, so when they call the dispatch center, they will let us know it's only for certain things, like if your driveway is being done, you know, now that doesn't include, people get that confused sometime, sometimes if there is excessive snow, an excessive two inches, then there's no parking at all till after the streets are cleared, but the two to six parking is in effect, and yes, we are enforcing it, but I'll make sure that they definitely target.
Eleven twelve, Amherst Lane.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year to everyone. How's everyone doing?
Great.
Great. I'm looking at the agenda tonight in reference to utilization of Regal Farm property. For those that may or may not have been aware, there was a petition going on throughout the community, getting somewhat of a consensus from residents of the community in reference to utilizing Regal Farm property for the purpose of a community center for all ages. I don't know, since I see this on the agenda now, I don't know if this will or will not address what the residents have a concern for, for utilizing that location, I guess I'll just have to be patient and get to that, and I know I only have three minutes for whoever's clocking me. So it's about an accountability, I guess, as far as what intends to happen to Regal Farm. It's a beautiful location that has a certified full-service kitchen, that there could be so many different projects to address all ages throughout the community, as far as making use of that location. That's that one issue, I'm trying to race through to my next issue. In light of something you mentioned at the appreciation dinner the other night, Madam Mayor, about being a federal employee, I'm just wondering for the residents throughout this community who are also federal employees affected by it, will it be a possibility maybe that through human services or whoever it can be channeled through, that something can be done to assist residents in this community?
Such as?
Such as some type of food bank perhaps, that we can establish just for residents of this community? I know I take seniors of faith movers for their food mart, but again.
Baptist has one as well.
Yes, ma'am, I can only be at one place at one time.
I know, they understand that, it's a statement.
Yes, ma'am, but I'm just saying, I have a concern about residents in the community getting some kind of assistance.
Okay.
Okay, if it's something we can pull together.
I'll address that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that, I'll talk to the human services president, which is here in the audience, and ask her, maybe we can put something together, but as a federal worker, they are being compensated, they're not publicly saying that, there's some things, they are constantly, you know, giving them for it and accommodating them, but I don't think that I have the right to put that out yet, because it won't go to federal workers, but they're doing a lot of things for them to compensate that.
Okay.
Other agencies and other organizations.
Okay, great.
That's connected to the credit union, we all got them in the mail.
Okay.
So.
All right then, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, and to address that, as far as the farm, it's been, you know, bit of a disarray for a long time, and we've been, I've been saying since I was trustee that we should have written what Ms. Nun left here for it to be renovated, but it never, I guess it always fell on deaf ears, and it was never done, so they, I do know that public works have gotten it out a while back, back in the summer, they've been cleaning it out, and looking on the agenda, the earlier agenda that we had, a special one, we are, we have JMA that's going to create a center, activity center for a youth center, development center here in the Town Center, for the facilities and for the people and youth and everyone here, so I think that would be a nice compensation as well, but we do know, just a silo is considered a landmark, and that's a historical site that they've done, so we're trying to make the best of it, we've been planning, talking us forward about this for a while, so it's not like we are just ignoring that spot, and we're trying the most effective thing we can do with it.
Okay.
So it's been on the work, it's been on our, aye, it's been on our agendas.
Well, we'll all keep our ears open.
No problem.
So it won't be falling on deaf ears.
No.
Okay.
Been on there for ten years, but.
Okay.
Thank you so much for taking the interest. Ms. Trust, Mary Trust.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year to everyone as well, and I hope you didn't catch this bad cold as I have had for the last three or four weeks, but.
Get better.
I beg your pardon?
Said, hope to get better.
Oh, yes, I'm getting there, I'm getting better, but what I want to say to you, in doing and planning for Regal Farm, I've been here a long time, and so has that farm, I believe you would be, it would be advantageous for you to consider what the taxpayers want in the village. I, I believe, uh, you would be, uh, it, it would be advantageous for you to consider what, uh, the taxpayers want in the village, that it actually sits in a beautiful setting, uh, for the benefit of carrying on a community center for everyone and especially senior citizens, since I'm one of those who may be using that and we are the one, on June first, will be actually paying our taxes and we are the one will be voting and, uh, we are the ones who need a community center and it's near all of the other activities as well. But, uh, we did, uh, a survey and we did a more representative survey on that, around the village, not just in one place, but around the village. We did, and the people were very interested, we got an enormous amount of, uh, signatures and they were interested in a community center that serves everyone, including the senior citizens as well. And it's located, like I say, right near the largest park there and it offers more to all, for everybody here. And I just cannot see for the life of me how you're only building around one segment of the community and that's the youth. And the youth is fine and it seems to be only one segment, uh, concentrated in football, basketball, baseball, a little bit of baseball and wrestling. And forget about the girls, you only have cheerleading. But there are so many other things we can do with that and I wish you would, uh, in your thought, be considered, uh, the vast number of people in this town who might be using that, including me, the senior, laugh if you want to, but I'm proud to be there on this side of the grass.
Okay, Ms. Trust, thank you very, very much for your comments, but we're not going to be thinking just about that. Like you said, we've been here a long time and we appreciate your involvement and we are trying to do a town hall meeting and I'm going to plan that, I've said that earlier, I don't know, that, I'm so glad the cable station is on so people can hear now and know what's going on in the village, but we have great plans to do just that. We want to accommodate anyone and everyone in the Village of University Park. I've been out here over twenty-three years as well and I remember the barn and I remember what it did for my children and my grandson. And so we're going to consider everybody in this making and we want everyone to come out because we're going to put together, I just told one of the trustees, with CMAP, we had a beautiful webinar today and we're going to have them to come out and help us with our five-year plan and the funds that's available and it's, um, things such as that, a rec center, recreational center for all ages. So that's not going to be discontinued in our minds about not doing anything for our seniors, just for everybody. So that's what we plan to do.
Madam Mayor, can I be, can I be acknowledged?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Trust, I was chuckling about another subject, I wasn't chuckling when you made a comment, so I just want you to know that this is your own character.
Okay.
Okay.
Someone else?
No, uh, no offense taken.
Okay.
Because I could raise you to the end of the street.
I'm sure you can, I'm sure you can.
I'll spread your end of the.
Okay. Sorry, um, that's, I think that's all of public comments, yeah. Oh, yes, yes, sir. I'm sorry. Mr. Rice?
Yes. Uh, in October, I went to the, uh, educational board meeting and they have a, uh, I just want the, the village, the trustees to, uh, to be aware of this. They have a, on Facebook, someone put it on Facebook, of himself in, with a bear at a Bull's game and they said that that was not into the morals or, uh, of what they want for the, for the children, for the students as a moral thing, but they said that this one particular employee who had a Confederate flag on Facebook, which I find offensive, I find it as a traitor to the union, uh, that that was free speech. Now, to me, that that's a big difference, that's not, I don't think that that's free speech, but I just want to make the board aware of this and that, that you may, uh, support our members on that board and, uh, what they would like to do with this, if, if that's possible. And, um, my, like I said, my perception is a traitor to the union and that, uh, if you want to do that, that's your business, but maybe you can do that in a non-majority, minority, black area. If you want to have, if you want to do that, you can do that someplace else. That is my opinion and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Rice, I'll be up with you after. Thank you. Okay, that was all the make and for this session, public comments. Business discussion items. First item for discussion, the resolution of Village of University Park, Willoughby County's authorizing momentum on personnel hiring replacement. What's the topic? For discussion, guys? Um, well, personally, does anybody, nobody's talking?
Well, yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
First, I'm just wondering why this is even on here for discussion, uh, because the, you know, the village manager, uh, has the responsibility to manage the village, which includes personal hiring and firing. You know, it was back in the day, not too long ago, Mayor, I'm sure you recall, where there was a lot of politics being played with, with our staff between, uh, before administrations, uh, people were, positions were not being filled because whoever's going to come in wants to put their person, uh, in, in office and I thought we corrected that by, uh, not allowing that kind of thing and then, uh, to also follow the proper procedures for selecting, uh, uh, people, so that we go out and we have an open solicitation of candidates for a given position and they're evaluated based upon their credentials and the, uh, uh, their background in relation to the job. You know, and I guess, you know, with me, I look at what's been happening in different parts of the country. Also, with particularly, Wisconsin comes to mind, where the Democrats there won and then the Republican Party went and gutted things to take the power away from the new democratically, uh, governor. And, you know, I see this in that, that same kind of vein, it's, it's politics and really, this is something that I, I definitely wouldn't support. Now, the issue is not financial because I think during our joint, um, finance committee, uh, board meeting that we had, um, last year, uh, and we had all of our financial experts also that came and we heard that the village is definitely moving forward and, uh, that, you know, we're going to be on, uh, pretty solid financial grounds here in the future. And, uh, you know, we, we had our, um, our Director of Public Works that took another position in Lansing at this critical time also, with all of the things, you know, our, our Public Works Department already is shorthanded. To try to hamstring the village's manager for moving forward on it, on, 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 on something like that is really, in my opinion, not, not the way for us to go. So I definitely wouldn't support something like that.
Okay. Any others?
I too concur with, uh, uh, my fellow board member, Mr. Payton, that I think the village is moving forward in so many ways. There are a lot of individuals out there outside of this board that are, they're sort of like haters in a sense because they don't want the village moving forward. And I don't want the village, the board itself, to hamper anything that's going forward and to hand tie the manager from doing his job, especially after, uh, that person resigned and we need another person in, in, in place. I would not support this either.
Just a discussion. Not for support. Whatever you feel you want to do, okay, anyone else?
All right, is this a discussion in reference to somebody replacing someone in Public Works?
Yes.
Well, this, this generally says a moratorium on personnel hiring and replacement, which is anybody that should leave.
No.
And I'd say.
I know, right?
Yeah, okay.
Well, that's.
I, I didn't, I didn't know.
Fire job that was posted, that I know of.
Because I, I do know that in, in a couple of months, or if not even sooner, the police department, which is, uh, hurting and if I'm not mistaken, the fire department are down now with their retirees, uh, personnel hiring. In that aspect, I do know that we definitely, uh, you know, will be sending people to the police academy and as well as, uh, fire personnel being hired, so I don't have that much to say.
Trustee Wilson.
So we've heard why some people don't want to support it, can we get an explanation of why this was put in the board packet?
It was a request.
No explanation as to why, though?
I think you know what's going to be, go ahead, I'm sorry. Fund was going to be, it was suggested because of the savings and the summaries from the finance that we'll wait for a while before we hire someone in that position as director, it'll save the village eighty thousand dollars for them, small period time. That was suggested. Ma'am? Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking like this, if we got less people, okay, like you said, Public Works, we've got somebody gone now.
One person.
We need more help in that department, so isn't this going to hinder us if we don't hire somebody?
You can hire someone, it's just discussion, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm asking, it's discussion.
Right.
I thought that's what I'm doing.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, you know, that's what I'm saying, it would hurt us because we need it.
All right, so we can just, um, remove that.
Okay, and just like what, Theo was saying, the police department, we need police. So I can understand what you're saying about money, we don't have to pay that much money, anybody love a job, won't they? That was a joke right there, but no. We have to pay, you know, somebody, but for us to have a better community safely, like, you know, we heard about the problem we had today, we need police, we need public work.
Definitely need that.
You see what I'm saying? So that's a discussion.
Okay, so. Trustee Wilson.
Um, I do like section four, it says until further action of corporate. I do like the part about the village manager should report on a monthly basis hires, terminations and vacancies. Because not everyone, everyone in the village knows about vacancies and we, while we may have some people who are knowledgeable or, um, they're, they're qualified to do the position, they don't know about it. Um, and I, 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 as a board member, I like to know when people are terminated.
Yes.
So it would be nice if we can, maybe on the manager's report and then at, on the website, add vacancies in the village or report them at a board meeting so everybody will know about it.
We were doing that at one time.
And so, um, yeah, I, I'm.
All right, so, um, we will not put this on the next agenda.
Yeah, I appreciate you talked to trustee Oscar Brown Jr. about that, too.
Okay. No more, so this is not, okay, that's a no. Okay, next item. Five eight two, discussion resolution authorizing execution of a consulting service agreement by and between the Village of University Park, Willoughby County's and NJN Consulting Services, Fox Accounting Services.
Madam Mayor, I, I'll open up the discussion. Uh, last year, um, the board directed that we do a RFP process to find a financial firm, uh, to do the financial services, uh, taking over for IRH. Uh, we did do this, um, RFP, we had three organizations that came forward, uh, IRH came forward, uh, Whipple came forward and NJ, NJ, uh, NJN and, uh, IRH withdrew their proposal as well as Whipple withdrew their proposal. Uh, from doing accounting services, because Whipple currently does audits, so it would be, it would, we would have to end up finding another auditor and they're already moving so good and getting our audits done and completed. So they did not want to stop doing audits and then go come in and do the accounting work. Um, I am presenting the candidate that is left, uh, for discussion for the board to review. Uh, and, uh, I've, I've talked to Nick, uh, in extensive basis over the last six months and Miss myself and Miss Kelly has had extensive conversations with him. Um, he has extensive finance background, municipal finance background, um, in, in various suburbs and I wanted to give him opportunity to speak to the board, look at his contract, his fee that he's charging and for you basically to, uh, kind of, uh, grill him with all the questions that you may have in regards to what his capabilities are, what he can do. I would tell you, IRH's contract expired December one, so currently we have no one doing accounting and services as of December, uh, no, December thirty-first, we have nobody doing accounting services. Uh, we are in a great position, uh, twenty sixteen audit will be finalized, uh, the first board meeting in February, twenty seventeen's audit will be finalized in March. So I just want to keep things going to get twenty eighteen's audit done. So everybody's clear, the financials are all up to date up to twenty seventeen, those audits are in progress. Uh, Nick will be coming in, taking on twenty eighteen going forward, uh, and actually maintaining the system, maintaining the software, making sure the board gets generated reports, et cetera. But I wanted to make sure that the board had enough time to scrutinize, uh, the, uh, contract as well as the individual doing the work, uh, and provide input, uh, for hopefully approval for the next board meeting next Tuesday.
And as my colleague said, Mick Muller, I'm really happy that the village is moving forward because when I took this position, we hadn't had an audit since two thousand and eight. And I'm very, very happy that under this administration, we have gotten audits current and things are being done and I'm really, really impressed. I think we've come a long way, no audits being done and no one said anything about the audits not being done. So I'm happy where we are with this board and I would like to ask you a few questions, but I'll let anyone else ask first.
Could I give a, maybe a little bit?
Um.
Uh, if you wanted to give an overview?
Yeah, could I give a quick overview?
Yes.
Just so. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Board for giving me this opportunity. Uh, I also wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Payton and, uh, Ms. Kelly, they've been very gracious with their time.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, can we fix the mic?
Right.
Need to be closer. Is that better?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Um, I, I, all of you should have a copy of my resume and my background, I'd like to just go over that quickly. I'm not going to, I'm sure you know how to read and you've been through this, but I'd like to start in the center. When I was a full-time employee, uh, I started with the city of Joliet, at the Rock in Joliet, worked there for a few years. It's the highlighted area, about the third or fourth paragraph from the bottom. Uh, from there, I went to the Village of Hazelcrest, you could see, I was finance director in Lombard, finance director in Oak Park. And since nineteen ninety-four, I've worked in, uh, I've worked in a lot of communities, a lot of different organizations in various capacities. But you could see that all of it was to improve our financial operations, that's basically what I do. Uh, I go into areas that need some improvement, need some updating and sometimes just, uh, organizations grow out of their current staff. Things get more complicated, things get more difficult and that's where I come in and I usually set things straight and try and upgrade as much as I can and improve as much as I can. Uh, you'll note that, uh, kind of in between my, uh, my, my consulting activity and full-time employment, I did, I didn't put in here that I did work for Ellers and Associates for about six months and, uh, there I finished up some TIF work, but I worked in financial operations in two different states. Two cities in Minnesota did the same thing that is being required here and, uh, one city in Wisconsin, in addition to Mount Pleasant, Wisconsin. That's something I kind of pulled, pulled on my own. The, uh, the third paragraph from the bottom is, uh, the duties that normally I, I take care of and, and a lot of them fall into what the scope of work is here. And, uh, and, and all, all of that time, and most of my time is spent in local government, you can see that. Although I do work in the corporate sector, worked for Baptist Seminary for a while, worked for a county, worked in about three different, two different, two other different states, so I think I have a good background and a good field for financial organizations and what needs to be done. And if I could move, uh, quickly to the scope of work, it would be Exhibit A in my contract, that I, that I proposed contract. The, the, the scope of work is kind of defined here and that's what I'd like to stick. The, the scope of work is kind of defined here, and that's what I'd like to stick to, and talk about my approach in dealing with this. Typically, I'm the one who goes in and sees what your processes are. If I have somebody go in and tell me that, it's a little bit different. Okay, if I know how you do your AP, how you do your payroll, how you do your monthly report, cash coming in daily, you know, how is that processed? Where does that go? Who sees that? Who signs off? I like to be the one who sees that done every day, not every day, but on a daily basis. From there, I could get a good handle on what's done. Sometimes it's not necessary to change things, not necessary to go in and change everything. Sometimes you do have good audit control, and that's really what you're looking for here, I think, throughout this whole process, is internal controls. And that seems to be what we've spelled out here in the scope of work. But what I normally do is to go in and do those myself, and, and then I could come up with a list of things, and I could meet with, you know, Mr. Page and Ms. Kelly, and say, okay, here's, here's what I see, and here's what I think you could upgrade, here's what I think you need to do quickly, and, and here's what needs to be done in the future. And then we transition into whatever needs to be done over a year period. I always tell people, you have to go through a cycle if you're going to change this, if you're going to improve it. And that means budget, audit, property tax levy, all your filings, your treasure report, all those end reports that have to be filed. But you have to see how that works on an annual basis, and see how your staff and your activities kind of tie in. Now, to me, the important thing that I see is somewhat in the middle there, perform monthly closing procedures after all, monthly adjustments have been made. I know you're working on the audits now, and you can't go two years back. I've worked at Tyler Software before, very good. You have fund balance, it's a really good product. And what I normally do is I try to come up with something, either in Excel, or a lot of times, you could go with a training cycle of Tyler, put the, put the entries in, just to get a monthly report of where the ins and outs are today, and where they are in this month. You have to live with that fund balance, because if you don't have your audits done, that's going to adjust from audit to audit. Real important that you get into your banking, you look at your bank reconciliations, and see how that cash is input to your system. That should be coming in every day in some way, even if it's in a holding pattern, or even if it's in Excel, we should be doing that. So, I would work on that, that piece. To me, that seems most important. And to look on the banking side and the cash activity, that's where you could have some issues and some problems. To try and get out some sort of monthly report, now, the balance sheet you're going to have to wait on, because your, your deferrals and your adjustments, a lot of adjustments, all of that impacts that balance sheet. That's going to be a little bit tougher to do, but you could live off an income statement for a few months. You could live off a bank reconciliation, understanding your ins and outs from month to month, and then tying in that fund balance when the time comes. Done this many times, have gone through this cycle many times, and made those improvements. To me, the things out of this list that could wait a little bit longer till audit time, record your property tax receivables, record your accruals, those are always done at year end, fixed asset activity, that's always done at year end, and then under annual, those four items there, those are all audit activities. But the important one is that center one, and then working on those cash transactions, your bank accounts, the receivables, you know, that are coming in, are, do you have a big aging schedule? I don't really know, you know, with all the buildings, we should be seeing that, and that's something that we should see, the bills that went out, and the receivables that came in. And then reviewing internal controls. Are there adequate sign-offs on your cash transactions, on your payouts, on your purchases that come in and out? So, that's how I approach this. Once we do that, we come up with staffing need, as far as what needs to be done here on a regular basis. This is the size of community. If you go through this list, you're about the size of a Winfield or a Manuka. I did work for Northfield, Minnesota. They're about the size of you guys in operation. You're a little more complicated, because you have a fire department, and that kind of adds a little bit more to your fixed asset side, and a little bit more to your, I don't know how your payroll's going, I really have to see the educational incentives, union contracts, and those kinds of things. But, but anyway, I think this is something I'm very familiar with, something I've done many times, and what I usually do is, even though I wouldn't be here every day doing everything, I usually call in every day. I would call to Celia or call Mr. Page, and there's always something. You know, there's always a check that came in, there's always somebody who called, and there's always something that goes on. So, usually, I set up a time when I would call, and then I'd be here a couple of days a week, and we can go through the mail, go through the invoices. Important to get a handle on the cash ins and outs on your bank statements, how your daily cash activity. And I think I could have this all tied out with some good internal controls and regular procedures over that one-year period, and then we could probably do a review, like quarterly, maybe come before the board, and just say, okay, here's what we decided to do, and here's, here's what we did over that three-month period. So, I think, I think there's got to be some reporting of this, so I'm just not out there collecting checks, and you'll be able to see those reports. And then eventually, we'll have to decide on some interim reporting that, that's important to you. Now, every, every city is different, every organization is different. When I was in Lombard, they had a regional wall, and I spent a lot of time on city tax, a lot of time. And I used to have to do a very extensive report, you know, on that. In, in Oak Park, they got a lot of grants from all over, and that was what I had to report there. So, I like to see what's important, and you, you'll have to tell me what's important to you and what you want to see. And then that's, that's what we'll report on every month, and I will kind of develop procedures and internal controls. And, but I think the reporting procedure and coming in and letting you know what we have accomplished is really important, so. Did I miss anything?
Not at all.
Yeah, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Yeah, could you talk a little bit about your staffing? Are you going to use existing staff, or are you looking at bringing on new staff?
I think what you got to do is, you've got to look at, and this, this always works out different for me. For example, I was, I'm in Crest Hill right now, and, and in the previous town, like in Manuka, when I, I said, look, you either have to hire, you know, a consultant on a full-time basis to be here, because you're too complicated right now, you have a lot of special service areas, and, and a lot of different things, and/or you have to hire a full-timer. Well, they kind of milled it over, and they says, well, we're going to hire a full-timer that's going to work for us. So, they lucked out, got a good CPA. Crest Hill, I had to change the entire staff there. They just, and again, that's, wasn't anybody's fault, it's just the operation outgrew the knowledge of the staff that've been there for about thirty years. And so, they just didn't understand some of the complicated accounting that has to be done, and, you know, and some of these MBA grants and those types of things. But they had one person there who was very good, and I said, you could do a couple of things, and the rest of these people aren't knowledgeable enough to do this. So, those people left, they wanted to hire people that worked for them. And then this one person, who was really gifted, real smart, young woman, I asked her to finish her MBA, and then she's the one who's the finance director now.
What's your plan for us, though? Are you, do you have existing staff that you're going to use, or are we going to use, you know, personally, two people that are in our department, and they're bringing in other, you know, part-time people, or what?
Well, initially, I would use their staff. I have to see what they do, and I have to see if I could consolidate duties, if there's, I guess, I just have to see what they do right now. And if I have to bring in someone on my own, what I usually do until that time is I'll use one of the accounting services, and I'll say, look, I need somebody to do AP and payroll two days a week, and they'll do that. They could either work for me, or they could work for you, and I've done that both ways also. And then we're going to reach a point to where we're going to have to say, do you want me permanently? Because if you want me permanently, here's the people I have to, I have to work with. But I'll work with your staff initially, because you, you just don't know how gifted some people are and how much work they do. So, initially, I have to work with them, and then I think in a few-month period, we have to have a discussion, and then decide, you know, who we could do without, and then how we could consolidate things and coordinate them a little bit. And I could do it either way. Now, if, if you did work with me, what I've done in the past is I've had people that work for me that come in so many days a week, and then for backup, we agree on that. We would have to say, okay, I work with this auditing firm in case that person can't make it. This person could come in, and that happens all the time. And, you know, the companies that come in here and say that they have staff that could do this, you really need somebody who's kind of close to the area. You need somebody who's in like a twenty, twenty-minute driving distance, because when you're bringing people in, where most of these firms are from, from Oak Brook, it's a long drive for one person, and you're covering a lot of travel time and things. So, typically, what works best for me is that approach. Go in, see what you could use internally, what you can't, we have to change, and then we decide, you know, if you want me to stay here for a long time, if you want a full-time person, if you want, you know, another temporary service, that, that might work also.
Your credentials seem to be impeccable right now, and your exposure and your experience in the field of finance with municipalities seems to be right on point. It seems to be that it's something that we need as a village to keep forward, to move forward, and to get our finances in order. So, at this point in time, like, like, like Page said, the staffing that you suggest that you, Jocelia's here right now, and we have manager Page. So, above and beyond that, your critique of those two, you would decide upon if you need to bring somebody else in.
Well, I think you have some administrative staff also, some people that, pardon me, handle the daily cash activity, and that's the area that I would look at, the people that work that are kind of under them. And I know you, I know Mr. Page handles a lot of financial, you know, management right now, and, you know, that we could certainly talk about, because, you know, you certainly need that as a, as a manager, you have to control whatever you can control. But I'd have to look at, I'm looking more at the people that do accounts payable, payroll, do the daily cash activity. Those are the folks I would look at, and see, could we continue to use those in a broader capacity, those folks? Or, you know, do we have to have some additions? Is there a way we can contract out? You have a lot of options available to yourself right now. But I would do all this initially. I, I think for at least a one- or two-month period, I'd have to see how that cycle works. And I'd have to do the AP and payroll, along with whoever, somebody does the payroll now, you know, I'd sit right there with them and see what they post, how the information comes in, you know, how that gets into the system, what they get from the departments. That's what I'd have to look at, is those operational activities, count payroll, accounts payable, payroll. Sir? I'm sorry, I did it again?
Yeah.
Did I?
Okay.
Am I okay now? I'm sorry.
Another trustee has a question.
I have a question. How much would you charge us for your services?
It's right here. Sixty thousand. Not to exceed sixty thousand. It's in the package, and it's right here. Sixty-five thousand, I said. Sixty-five thousand an hour.
Sixty-five thousand.
Not to exceed sixty thousand. It's right here. Sixty thousand. That's not, if you have to raise yourself.
Sure.
So, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I have a couple of questions. Under duty specifications and compensation, Exhibit A, it says additional services. Are those included in the sixty-five dollars per hour not to exceed sixty dollars, sixty thousand per year?
You know, there's always additional things that come up, and, and I think we have to be reasonable about that. It's just going to come up, and, and you always try to, you always try and manage that and take care of that under your limit. So, a good example is, you know, you're working on a budget, which I wouldn't be responsible for, but a big part of doing payroll correctly is to have a spreadsheet with all the employees and all of their, you know, if anybody's worked in a, been handling payroll, where there's a lot of different educational incentives and different types of things, you have to have that set up at the beginning of the year. But you use that for budget also, and that's going to cross over. And I think there's going to be a lot of gray areas where there's going to be some additional things. I mean, if it gets to be, you know, to where it's like twenty or thirty hours or something like that, then I think we need to talk. But, but there's additional things that are going to come up that have to be handled under that limit, and I think we'll all be reasonable about that. I can't imagine anything insurmountable coming up.
So, I, oh, you can't imagine. We've worked with several companies, several consultants, and a lot of things have come up to the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars.
They won't.
Right? And they have not to exceed, but then they have additional services where there's always a gray area, and it's not twenty hours a week. The dollars don't add up. It's twenty hours a week per year. They adds up, they add up to hundreds of thousands of dollars. Concern number one. Concern, question number two, sorry. Which of these companies, it says your background, 1994 to present, how many companies or what companies are you consulting for currently?
This is my company, NJN Consulting. The only other company I did consulting work for was Ellers and Associates. They're a bonding house, and they do a lot of TIF work. And I did work for them for about an eight-month period.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Your company, but so, you're doing.
You're asking how many towns are you currently contracting with?
Currently, right. Who are you currently contracting with?
Well, I'm currently with Crest Hill. I just finished that relationship with Northern Baptist Theological Seminary. So, I'm with Crest Hill. I do, you know, I do some things outside of this, outside of municipalities.
Okay, so Crest Hill is the current one?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I don't know. I think, attorney, if you reviewed this, could we consider putting some stipulations in here? We've, we've dealt with several, I've only been here four years, and there've been several, three companies, consultants, people that I can recall, that we didn't have limits set, and, and we spent way more money than was in our budget, and there was no way we could get out of it for a contract. So, right. And so, while we have, we have a list of duty specification and compensation, but then it's additional services. And it says a fee of sixty-five dollars per hour not to exceed sixty thousand, but we need something in here for additional services, not to exceed additional services. And then, you know, this is a time for discussion. I was, I don't know, maybe I forgot, I don't recall. I know we did RFP, but I don't recall hearing that the other two dropped out, or I just don't remember, because I don't know if it was recent or what. But consultants tend to cost more money than hiring somebody. And since we are moving forward, you know, the board has not discussed, do we want to hire somebody, or do we want to use a consultant? I think our, initially, IRH was supposed to come in, and they were supposed to clean things up and leave all documents behind, so we could hire somebody else. Then we had the, the auditors, they came in with some special people, I remember, they were supposed to be helping us tidy up some things to make it easier, so we could hire somebody else. And hire somebody that's here full-time, as opposed to the long travel distance that he spoke of. So, you know, I'm not sure, I think, I don't know if it's too late, but I think the board should discuss that. And, so, question for Mr. Page.
Yeah, no, just a.
Mr. Whipple, you said the company Whipple, they backed out because they were our auditors?
They're currently doing our auditors. So, for auditor, for the same company to come in and do the financials and do the audits is a conflict.
So, why did they? I agree. So, why did they put in a bid if they knew they were our auditors? Or was that flipped? They, they became our auditors after they did the bid? Because that is a conflict, so why would they put in a bid and it be a conflict, and then they have to pull it?
So, when they initially came in as auditors, they had not started the audit process at the time they put in for this RFP. So, at that point, they had not started the audit process. So, at, at it came to a point when they started the audits, they were so far into the audits, they said, you know what, it's not reasonable for us to turn on with the audit process. To answer the question in regards to the board and direction, the discussion was had, I want to say about six months ago, where I came before the board, and the board authorized the RFP process for a consultant to take over the financial and accounting services, which was posted on all major municipal websites, South River Mayor Managers, and various sites. The board was consulted and asked if they wanted to bring on a finance manager, if or if you want, you all wanted to bring on a consultant. It was decided that it was cheaper to bring on a consultant, get our financial condition in a place where it's stable and moving forward and going from there. Of course, we had IRH. Of course, we came to a point where we did not want to continue on services with IRH. But at that point, we weren't all the way finished with everything that needed to be done. But the board did not want to go forward, and I think IRH as well did not want to go forward with any further contracts or agreements to continue to do our financial work. So, I really think, in my opinion, I think we need to get current in our financials, get somebody to look at our internal controls. IRH is supposed to do all that.
Right.
And of course, that was not achieved, you know. We end up paying out more money than we were supposed to pay, as you, as you stated, trustee. So, at this point, we need to have somebody bring, make us whole, get us current, and then the board can make a determination. I mean, I, one thing I would say about the individual standing up here, he asked, made a statement on one key thing that I think consultants before my time did never make. Board, what type of reports would you like to see monthly? What do you want to see monthly? How do you want to see it? How do you want to see it? That was not a question by any of our consultants that we had in the past, nor did they want to provide a report to the board or, or generate one.
It just wasn't given.
So.
Yeah, Mayor McMillan.
Yes, sir.
Just, just a couple of things. First of all, I think everybody is pretty aware of the financial mess that we had with our previous finance department. The numbers that I saw were like, we spent, I think, over about a four or five-year period, one and a, about a million and a half dollars for our staff. And we got a mess that cost us probably close to a million dollars to correct, you know, and that was one of the reasons why the board decided to move forward with somebody that would be a lot more objective and a lot less subject to politics inside the village. The second thing is the, you know, what we forget when we hired IRH Developments and once they started, the depth of the problems that they found, where we couldn't get records, they couldn't do some things. They started out, they were supposed to only reconcile about a dozen checking accounts and ended up with eighty-two accounts that we didn't even know about, we didn't know, even though we had. So, yeah, we spent more money than, and then let's not forget the tip agreements and all the stuff that we had to go through with the forensic audits on the tips and everything else, just to get out of the, the mess that we were, we were in. I mean, it was really deep. When we started this process, we thought we would have to file, if you could and you can't, file bankruptcy for this village. And really, what would have happened is the state would have come in and taken us over for twenty years. So we really can't forget that when we had our own department that put us in that mess. So I'm for having outside professionals to do what they need to do. We now have auditors, we'll be caught up and our accounting will be as it should be. So, you know.
And thinking back on that, that's what I'm talking about. We, I know the finance committee, which Peyton, trustee Peyton sits on, and the board have asked for quarterly reports. We want to see quarterly reports at all times. So we'll know where we're at, what we need to do, because the last summary that we received from the audit gave us a lot of good information, and they've been giving it in the years, but no one paid attention to it. Like I said, no audits was done and nobody talked about that. And that's why we were in the terrible situation we were in, no audits. I don't know why, even our residents, no one said a word. And it just doubled and it continued and continued and we were in a horrible mess. That's why this board is suspicious of in and everybody because of what's going on. But it seems that we're out of that hole, as trustee Peyton said. We're now getting our heads above water and we have to be careful on what we're doing, who we do it with. So that's why the concerns are here today.
Sure.
But we would like to see, we will talk to you, I guess, I think we should do, the board should do a workshop, you know, if it's approved, on exactly what they expect, what they want to see and how they want to see it and how often they would like to see it.
Sure, I can give you some.
And be transparent to the, our, also to our audience. The residents have a right to know as well. And we do have combined meetings with the finance committee and the board, and it's always a workshop that welcome our residents as well, that they can ask questions. But that's what we're trying to see. I have a, I'm sorry, do you have another question?
I do one.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I just would like to ask, attorney wise, this, and I'm sorry, I'm so cynical, but this looks like an open checkbook to me and we've done that twice since I've been on the board in four years. We've done that twice, and I don't think University of Park should be an open checkbook. And when we don't set limits in writing on paper, it could be a limit set and then if it needs to be looked at again, it changed. But to have an open checkbook to this village is unacceptable to me.
Is that a question, I mean?
I'm, I'm talking to the public, John Wise, attorney Wise, because this additional services part, if it's not included in sixty-five thousand, the sixty-five per hour not to exceed sixty thousand, that's an open checkbook in my eyes. And so maybe if we have a workshop and we can discuss it, add some additional.
Just wait, just wait. I want to trust, you know, you are going to respond. You are. No, 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 you can respond. No, you can respond. He's the public, it's for the public, you can respond.
Well, so my question.
You are.
Treasurer Dealworth, to, no disrespect, but my question was addressed to the attorney regarding an open checkbook because additional services is listed here with no limit.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't addressing your question.
So I just want to, attorney.
And then we'll come to you. Okay.
Here's, here's.
Oh, this, here. The exhibit does specify that no case will be, the compensation be over sixty thousand in a year. If the additional items want to be specified, you, we could.
I ask a question, we need to ask the line, additional services.
Correct. But it says not to exceed sixty thousand per year. So if there are additional items, it would be sixty-five dollars per hour, but in no case would the fees paid to Mr. Narducci exceed sixty thousand per year. Additional items, if we have an idea what those are, we can specify them, include them in here. Additionally, this consulting services agreement also has, if, if for some reason the board decides after a month, two months, three months, that it's not going in the direction they'd like to see it go in, there is a termination provision, whereas either side, Mr. Narducci or the others, with thirty days written notice, they can terminate the contract and the company would not have to pay for any services after he effective table of termination. That's, that's in the actual consulting services. Right there, here, in the paragraph two.
Then I guess this would be for Mr. Nicholas, I can't pronounce.
I heard the last name.
It's Italian. Just watched the whole thing in Sopranos. No, good player. That's just me, that's trustee Brooks. So additional service, let me just ask, and I think maybe I understand, and maybe that might be a misunderstanding, I just, I just want to make sure. When it says additional service, you're just saying what you do in addition or what to expect without, or just saying what your, your company provide extra with the services? Am I, am I correct? Are you following me on that? What is that? Maybe that's what trustee Wilson is, in, in case trustee Wilson or any other trustee. I, I'm seeing it as extra, as he says, review and revise internal control, develop and document financial policies and procedures. And I'm assuming that that is all included with the services that he has, but meaning that he does it automatically with. It's almost like you, when you go to McDonald's, you got your Big Mac, fries and your shake, but.
Extra sauce, they don't have it.
Not all the time. Some, some of them give it, or, I mean, it's, it's extra meaning that's, that's what I'm trying to go, is that maybe it's, it comes all with that meal.
Sure, what I could do, pardon me, but if, I was interested in completing the scope of services. Typically, I stick with that part of the agreement, that contract. I'd be willing to tie up the language with your attorney if you'd like to.
Okay.
Say you're satisfied with it.
That would be fine.
But if we could just stick with the scope of services, that's what you're interested in. If there's anything, if you want to put in, if there's anything outside the scope of services, maybe come before the board.
And you said your, your software, what type of software are you going to bring? We have ADP software, you have your own, or you, it's off-the-shelf type or?
Well, I think you have a Tyler product right now.
Okay.
And if you do, you paid a lot for that, and that's really good software. So I would suggest you keep.
We hear complaints that it's not, but okay.
Really?
Just to. Wait a minute, let me, go ahead, finish. What you were saying about the software, you said it's great.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see what you're doing right now, because if it is a Tyler product, typically that's good software, it's very expensive. I've used a number of their products in the past. And I'd like to see, you know, what you're using and how you're using it.
Right.
And it may be best if we just, again, that's something you got to discuss. If you want to keep that here, if you wanted to go offsite with that.
Okay, because that was a, that was a concern, the software we have, you could work with that? Because they were saying sometimes that they were running out of space, they didn't have enough, so I was wondering, and you look at it and see how it worked for you?
Yeah, unfortunately, if you're in finance all your life, typical, that systems work usually goes along with it, the hardware.
Yeah, it does.
So you're usually working with the system all the time. So I'd have to take a look at your system too, and we could add that right into the scope of services, and that shouldn't be a problem. If you're, if you're exceeding your capacity, you know, there's ways to get around that. If you've got too much history, there's a lot of things.
Okay, Mr. Dealworth?
No, I'll, I'll speak to you.
Does, oh, okay, all right, okay. Okay, so now, things when they come to our audits and, bless you, and other things that might come up, God knows what you might find, but I was hoping, we're, we're pretty clean right now, but it is some things that I'd like to see differently too. I like a lot of automation. I like a lot of files going certain to a service, special server just for this, this and tag and earmark. So I'm the technical part of that. I would like to see things, I don't want to see paper anymore. We need to do everything automated, so that way, push a button, we could report, and I think that'll help us keep things in line as well. You know, we can put our fingers on all the money and we have an audit, surprise audit or whatever, we have it there. I think paper is dangerous, and we know that on this board. And we would like, we would like to have quarterly reports and that. So if anybody, this is just a discussion to see if it will go on the board for our next agenda, and if there are any questions or concerns you'd like to tighten it up or add to it or taking away, the board has a right to make that addition or comments to it. So, but I think you're, does anyone else have anything else to say? Okay, so is this a move to put on the board?
Yeah, Mayor, if we, and I think as consistently moving forward, if, if we can just make certain that we address trustee Wilson's concern, so that it's pretty clear, you know, what the limit will be.
Right. And her additional, what additional means, right. So if there's an emergency, because that was one of the questions I had on the back here, what do you mean by additional? Here, I had it written down here. When you have like such as the bonds, you deal with bonds at all?
Oh, Jesus.
Pardon me?
Yeah, and, yeah, and this part of the work, yeah, you do, and then I, I worked for Ellers for a while, they're a bonding house.
Okay.
And did balance probably everywhere and every kind of different bond.
Okay. And the budget, you said, like you said, you would be doing that for us as well, the inputs that you get from our employees here? Or you have to be doing the budget yourself, strictly, I mean, with the input from the village manager?
Yeah, let's work on how we want to handle that budget process, because there, there is a lot of operational stuff, information you need to do that budget correctly.
Right.
And I designed some budget software myself that is probably a ninety percent of our organizations.
Right, treasurer's reports with our treasurer here?
Treasurer is a pretty standard document that has to go out, set by state statute, so, but getting all that information in, that, Tyler has that, fund balance. I've used fund balance before, the word is downloaded.
There's a lot of work, that's a long time.
It's just the audit fund balances that are difficult to get.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Is that go for the next agenda?
Yep.
Yes? Okay. All right, that's the first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity.
Okay. Five A, three, discussion landlord permit, crime-free housing. Our trustee, trustee that's been yelling for this so long, is not here, but I did try to find something, I think he was supposed to review it and come back to us with different words. I don't know what he was saying, but I know trustee Peyton had said, it's nice and it is nice, but at this time, he did a comparison with Park Forest, which had thirty thousand people, which is ninety thousand dollars. So I don't know if this other, I don't know, he never got back with me yet, his opinion of what another opinion was.
Madam Mayor.
Yes. You want to go? I just, I just had a question. You know, it's just like what Ms. Wilson just said, with the stuff that we were circling around, he can come up with a different price. So that comes back to, how much are you going to charge us? We don't know. This question is to the lawyer, right? So he can charge us more than his sixty-five thousand dollars. Am I right?
Oh, you're talking about the man?
Yeah, talking about the man who just left.
I, I'd have to pull up the agreement again, but the, the consulting services agreement says no compensation should be paid over or above what's shown in the exhibit. The exhibit's exactly sixty-five thousand, sixty thousand.
But it also said, just like Ms. Wilson brought up, it had that he can, additional services, he can add them on. So there's more than sixty-five thousand dollars. I'd like to be, you know.
Right, and that's where I, I think, while trustee Wilson and trustee Peyton clarified, we're going to get Mr. Narducci and put specifically the exact scope of services for the mortgage.
Okay, that'll be.
There will be no additional services, surprises.
At all, whatever he come up and say, you're saying.
No, he's going, he's going, he's going to.
That's what's written in this document.
He's going to clarify the scope of services. So there, there's no additional services.
Okay.
It'll just be scope of services. We can do review with the manager myself.
Okay.
And then the board will get that before any votes are taken.
Before, two days before the meeting, so I could read.
Yes.
Excuse me. Excuse me, excuse me, I think I was asking a question here. Okay, Mayor, board, the whole board, can't we interview about three people for this job to see how we're going to get the best for what we need?
Yeah.
Are we just going to interview one person? Our, that our people, they, they couldn't do it, they shouldn't even be considered that they are applied. So we should at least see more than just one person. I don't think that's good. But that's my opinion, the board, you can take care of it.
Trustee, the manager did explain that they did get three people and two of them withdrew, so we were, we were left with, with this one here, so.
But don't we get to see others?
Nobody else wanted to follow us.
So trustee, I'm going to be very direct with you. I put this out, every scope of length, me and the mayor discussed it, Mayor Managers, Illinois Municipal League, we put this out and we've only, we're only able to get three people. I'm not against putting it out, but I will tell you, it will greatly delay our audit progress. Twenty eighteen financials will not, it, it would be a delay in when we get our financials updated. Now, I'm not against, maybe a short-term, like, like he stated, a short-term agreement where it could be reviewed by the board, maybe on a quarterly basis, I don't have a problem with that, or strengthen up the language like attorney Wise says, but I think we can't stop progress. That's the biggest thing, I think my biggest concern.
Okay. That sounds right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, crime-free housing. I don't know what relate to.
Yeah.
You want that on?
Yeah. Mayor, on the crime-free housing, you know, I support the crime-free housing, but the board agreed to first have a hearing or a meeting or a workshop with all of the general managers of the multi-unit housing to get their input on this. And we, and we also said that we need to have the budget for enforcement and administration of this. This is no small thing. I mean, we probably should have, we should, we should probably have the, the owners of single-family residents that rent them out also provide their input, good and bad, about this, this whole package. And until, until we actually get that done, you know, I don't think we should entertain this.
Okay, so, Ms. Kitchen, would you mind taking a note, and Ms. Baldwin, that we're going to, to reach out to the people, those managers of the housing area that we do have here, and see would they be willing to have a meeting with us, a workshop with the board before we consider that? And anybody have anything, anything's like, I got this from Florida, criminal attorney there when I was there, and she said this is one that they had, but I was trying to give it to the trustee and he wanted to see it, but he's wanting to see it on the agenda. I tried to accommodate our board, so would you please make sure that we have a meeting and talk to the homeowners or, I mean, the partner complexes, see if we can get them together? Thank you all, ladies. Yes, so they'll be on hold, we won't, so that's something we won't put on.
So we don't need a motion to?
Oh, no, this is just discussions. The vote on what we're going to put on the agenda. Okay, so that will be held out. Thank you. I mean, if everyone's agreeing that we'll hold this one? Okay, not to bring it back until everything is done, solid. Okay, thank you. I'll buy...
I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be funny, Mayor, but can we leave him that memo?
Yes.
Because I, I mean, clearly trustee Peyton had said it, and then I think, in, in that case, I think I even brought up to that trustee, that the police department has something, and in fact, that, um, I described of a similar ordinance that, that I know that we use in Harvey, this, this orderly house, that if these officers had to use it, they can use it. So, if we can just kind of let him know. I know he's retiring.
Okay. He needs to get a memo. Okay, thank you. Five A four, discussion and ordinance deciding chapter fourteen fifty of the fourteenth of the codified ordinance of the village of University of Public County, Illinois, pertaining to flood damage prevention, and adopting chapter fourteen fifty-two pertaining to stormwater management as its replacement. Um, that was type one.
Madam Mayor, this is, this is a regulatory update that's required, that the board has to adopt, based on Illinois Department National Resources and EPA changing in regards to the flood plain. The engineers are working on this, and it is actually complete, and I request the board to move it forward, just for compliance purposes.
Yeah, I think that's what it gave us. No, no, okay. Okay. All right. You have any questions, anyone have any questions on this? Okay, then you agree to go to the agenda for a meeting, everyone? Okay. That will be on the agenda. Discussion solid waste collection management agreement. Um, this was one that...
They haven't provided.
Oh.
Nothing to discuss.
Okay, that was, okay, all right. Well, it's, we're gonna put on agenda, the purpose of it was, they called for a meeting, and they have an agreement, but they will bring it to us to cut down on the percentage of a collection if we just went on and did it. Now, I know it is due in a few months anyway, so if they would give us a discount, we would agree to do it earlier, so.
Attorney wise, can we enter into any agreements at this short amount of time?
They'll have to bring us something, they'll have to bring us something.
Is it something that the board has approved, though, Mayor?
No, we put on the agenda for the next one, for the discount. Madam Court?
Just so you are aware, I have received communications from one or two disposal companies asking if we would be going out to bid for this process.
When's the current act of it go?
In May or something like that. But, um, so what we'll do, we'll just wait until we get something from them, and possibly put it on the agenda. But we will, this is my request, that whatever disposal company we get, that they give us a discount, not to pick up, to charge the village, maybe for a disposal, and give us a discount. They are gonna do that this way. So, but still, we'll, I don't know, them to bid, or their contract is other decision. Okay, well, we'll wait until we get some paperwork from them. Okay, all of mine.
If it goes out for bid, will the board be able to see the required, be requirements?
I just gotta ask.
Yeah, we have to.
Just as a similar process, you know, in the special meeting trustee Wilson, it has to come before the board. The board has to approve the bid, the bid specifications before it goes out, so it just won't go out. It has to come back before you all.
And I'm asking because if it's, we don't know what the date is, we're not sure, and if it's, we think it's May, and it ends up being April, and we only, we don't have a lot of time if we're waiting for somebody to send us information, and waiting on bids, and the whole process, so.
That shouldn't be anything? Okay, so that's out. We'll wait for them to bid out, where I will talk, then we'll get back to the board. Um, five A five, five A five, discussion, oh, I'm sorry, five A five six, discussion utilities of Regal Farm property, utilization of Regal Farms property.
No documentation from the county.
Pardon me?
I mean, actually, I think we kind of thoroughly discussed, the mayor requested just as a, just general conversation, but I believe the board kind of addressed the utilization of Regal Farms, just not for any formal board action for the next board meeting. If any board members have any comments or input in regards to utilization of Regal Farm, I think I duly noted everybody's opinion, I duly noted the mayor's position on the matter as well. Um, the, the issue is, is funding, there's, unless we get a grant, there's no other funding available to completely rehabilitate the farm. I have fifteen thousand dollars in ASGROW fund to go towards the renovation of the farm. The issue is, the renovation of the farm is over fifty thousand dollars. So, I have to find some type of matching funds to kind of deal with that. I did try to go to other resources in order to get funding in regards to the farm, and those requests were denied by one of our industrial park partners. So, I know we kind of went into extensive conversation in regards to it. Um, I know the mayor may have additional input she might want to provide as well.
I know she was thinking about selling it, but I don't want to sell it. So, I was thinking that if they close the school, we have a, we've talked about it over and over, about this place being, it's just been a horrible condition, looks terrible, and as he said, no one wants to donate any money for it, and the cost, we don't have the money. So, the money that, I was looking at, Santa Claus and I went over there and saw the before-and-after school, and they are almost gaining seventy-five hundred dollars, and they're busting from the seams. So, I was thinking maybe if we could do that, the renovation, the money that they're getting there, we could possibly use some of that money to have the before-and-after there, and, you know, in place they close the school, heaven forbid they do that. But I mean, they don't have enough room right there for the kids anyway, and they have waiting lists.
So, you're requesting as an alternative, if the school is closed, not moving even if the school stays open?
Even if it isn't, I just think that we're wasting, we're losing money, because there's so many people that would like to be a part of the before-and-after school.
So, what I would ask is...
And you're getting a hundred and twenty-five dollars a chair.
What I would ask is, and I will talk to Ms. Hampton, you might want to get a poll from the parents, because they enjoy using the school, because it's the convenience of having their kids in the same building they have class. If you move it to Regal Farms, and you're talking about busing students, or students being transported from Regal Farms to their school for classes?
Now, are all the kids, my question, are all the children there? Because we did, and the other director that's working there, I can't think of her name.
Yvonne Higgins.
Ms. Higgins says, she has her master's degrees, she says she'd be more than, well, helpful to find a grant to help them out. But I'm, my question is, are all the children right there at the end?
Majority, not all.
I know. Because we have people coming from Free, Park Forest, Moni, we have a lot of people coming to that fantastic school.
And the school district, and the school district has asked also, at one time, I think in our last meeting, when me and you went to the school district, requested that we try to expand before-and-after care to other school facilities within two or one units, well. So, that is, that could be possibly on the table as well. Two or one, you did ask, if we can expand our services to other schools outside of University Park, which will bring more revenue. So, it's really, I think, looking, doing a SWOT analysis, and kind of looking at the cost-benefit analysis, and see what benefits. But I do agree with you, Mayor, the property does have to be utilized. Uh, the, the biggest issue we run into is, the longer the property's not utilized, the worse the property gets, then it costs more and more to rehab. But my, my, my idea of liquidating property is not to remove services from the village, is to provide services for the village, in that whoever can, you know, based on their agreement, or however a sale goes, or even a lease goes, it could be specific specifications of what the property can and cannot be used for, and it'd be a benefit for the residents of the village, similar to the pool as well.
Right. And that's something, like I said, that's a, just a monument for a university park that burned. It's known, it's settled, there's a saddle there, and it's been depreciating and depreciating. The stairs, people are afraid to go near it. I know the inside was in terrible condition. But we can, if someone has to do something, we can use it. If we do convert it over to the before-and-after, and she has to help us with grant money for it, I mean, we can extend it after hours for our seniors or other residents to use it for other things. So, I just think it's a kind of a win-win situation, we do that.
Agreed.
But it's something that we can talk about, discuss. That was my idea, just use it and make it beautiful. That's a historical spot in University Park, and I would not want to lose that. Why it wasn't taken care of, why it's, I mean, I know there's a tree that fell on it, and a lot of other things in there, it just really needs to be, and I know they have to gutted it out, our farm, I mean, our public works have gutted it out as much as they can, but it's a lot of work that needs to be done around it as well, so. If not, we can start our little farm over there again, get rid of some of the stuff, clean it up, but I just think we can save it. Just really think we can save it. It could be a multi-use facility. So, I don't know, we would have to workshop that and see how people feel about what they like to do, and include our audience, our residents, to see how we can feel about it.
And the financial aspects of it. Maybe a town hall subject, maybe?
Yes, sir. Okay. So, that's just a hold right now.
Put on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion utilization of Regal Farm property, okay, we get that. Uh, annual meetings scheduled for board trustees and committees, committees and commissions. Actually, that should have been on there. Is that okay to put on the agenda? Do you have scheduled meetings?
Yes.
Mayor, the, the only change that I, I see is to the finance committee.
Yes, sir.
For January sixteenth, the joint meeting with the board trustees, which would be tomorrow. And that hasn't even been posted, so we can't have that.
She has, she's joining tomorrow? It has been posted, trustee Peyton had received it from Mrs. Hurd.
But not the joint?
On Sunday.
Yeah, for the finance committee, but not, not with the board, too. Or, or did, or did I miss something?
We all missed what was a joint meeting of the board, and the finance committee.
So, we'll see all the board there tomorrow night, right? Here tomorrow night?
No.
Okay. Now, do we consider what you said, trustee Neil Tumpatin, about the quarterly finance? Is that considered in these scheduling dates?
Yeah. If you look at page two there, the, uh, the joint meetings were January sixteenth, April seventeenth, August twenty-first, and November the twentieth. But I would recommend, Mayor, that any, any reporting also from our financial consultants, just like the last time we had, and, you know, we go with, if we go with accounting services, that they also come and provide a report on a quarterly basis.
What about...
Question, there's another correction. Human Services Specialty Events Committee decided to have their meetings on, looking to change their meetings to the second Thursdays of the month. The calendar we have, it conflicts with Parks and Recs being the first Thursday of the month. Yeah, well, it's on the calendar.
Well, that, that's a no problem.
So, if you just want to, it's at seven, or...
You don't have a park rec.
Human Services Specialty Events Committee meeting dates will be February fourteenth, March...
Yeah, but the question on that one, though, I, you know, Ms. Jenkins, it's a part of that. It was that day, would that work for, I know she has two committees she's on, so she...
Thursdays. The Human Services Specialty Events changed their meetings to the second Thursday, so it's not to conflict with any other...
Okay, that's what I want to make sure, okay. Second Thursday.
So, this will be the second Thursday.
Yes. February fourteenth, March fourteenth, April eleventh, May, May ninth, June thirteen, July eleven, August eighth.
Just because we have the first.
That was somebody else's meeting for July, Human Services Specialty Events is July eleven, August eighth, September twelfth, October tenth, November fourteenth, and December twelfth.
Um, what about, I put it through this another one. Yes, sir.
I'm looking at, just as a clarification, I'm looking at the finance committee meeting's agenda, and it's not a joint meeting, it's a regular, it's just a regular, it's a regular finance meeting.
Okay.
I've got the agenda here, and it, it only says just finance committee, right?
Thank you.
And Mayor, Mayor, just real quick, I know we going over committees and commissions, and I just ask a point of clarification. As far as committee agendas, I know I always run into this issue with the finance committee. Uh, agendas go out, and especially with the finance committee, the village manager and the finance department has to have a lot of input in the agenda, but the finance committee chairperson just puts out agendas and not check with us in regards to availability of certain information that they're requesting, and various other things like that. Is there any kind of protocol that we kind of can address with the committees on that? Uh, more specifically, the finance committee, I know I've spoken to you about that before.
Yeah, I'm just a liaison.
Know what?
No, but, you know, it, there should be a, at least a two-week advance notice on the agenda. Because we, you know, we don't get the agendas until just before the meeting.
Now, question, a question about that. Now, before, that's a concern I have, before, the finance director used to make that, and they would make that agenda with the village manager. So, it's been, it looks like it's been taken out of his hand, and the president does that.
Yeah, ever since I've been, ever since I've been manager, the chair and person of the finance committee comes out with an agenda, and then I will put out an email of objection, saying that the information that you're requesting, you're asking for one-day notice. And even it came to a point where we had to cancel a meeting that was scheduled unnecessarily. Some of these information, some of the information requested specifically for the meeting tomorrow, is information that we already addressed at the joint board meeting in the finance committee. So, we're rehashing information that's already been discussed. So, I just, while we're talking about that, I just wanted to kind of bring that up.
We'll address it with the finance chairman and the committee tomorrow, tomorrow night, yeah.
Because village manager actually is supposed to be setting those things up, and those meetings up. Is that it?
Yeah.
And get along with her. Um, there's one here, we're going to add, um, Economic Development Committee, not on here. I will talk to the...
Yes, ma'am.
Is it on here? Yes, okay.
Look above. Okay. 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 I don't have, somebody got your one for me, anyway, let me see yours. Apparently, you got the better one.
Okay.
Economic Development.
Yes.
It's here, but you never...
Right. I said I'll get with you on that date, okay? I'll compare with the other ones, and let her, let you do that. Because we, that's one that she's really interested in doing, and I'm really honored to have Ms. Orr to be the chairperson of that committee, because she was the one that did Blacks, Black, no, was it? Yeah. What is the company she did? Brownstone in Chicago, and she's been a resident of University Park for years. I'm really, really happy and honored that we have, having her to head up that committee. So, I will get with that, and I'll revise this, Clerk D. Jones? Okay, for the meeting?
As a matter of fact, Madam Mayor, I've got what, what two?
Pardon me?
I think we've got four committees.
So, we have...
That have dates.
Okay, then you'll, so you can take this other one off, or there's no... Yeah, we don't have this committee. Question, yes?
Madam Mayor, but it was never officially removed as a committee, that's why it's still listed.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, trustee Wilson?
That was my question, if, if we don't have Parks and Recs Department, how do we have a Parks and Recreation Committee?
Ordinance needs to be modified.
Okay. That will be done.
Could I, could I just ask a question?
Yes.
The Parks and Recs Advisory Committee, as I understood it, just dealt with youth activities, even though he, the department has been resentful. But do they not still have programs?
They have, they have programming, they have the basketball going on now, they have fun nights. Not Parks and Recs, but the village just have programs that go on.
We don't have, we don't do that.
No, no, there's no, I haven't, I have not seen any committee meetings, no. I haven't seen any committee meetings.
Well, we have the Science Committee, we have...
I used to go to them when we had Parks and Recs. There were Parks and Rec advisory committees, and we met, but Parks and Recreation was dissolved, the committee stopped meeting. And at that meeting, it wasn't, we didn't discuss what happened on football and baseball.
No, I'm just saying, it's still on here, because the board has never removed this committee.
Okay, so we, maybe we need to call the Recreation Committee. Have Recreation, I don't know, we'll have to discuss that.
Right, the board will still have to take some action.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next thing, with that said, and we need to make sure that we get your agendas out on time, okay? Because this, all right, what we need to do, we have our meetings, the four agenda meetings every second Wednesday, and I sent an email out on that, and said, it's the fourth and the second Wednesday. If we cannot do another Wednesday, we'll do it the latest on a Friday. We should have these board packages to everyone by Tuesday. And it's not clerk's fault at all. We just have to make sure we have, we have these meetings. If you don't have the meetings, then we have to move forward, because I don't want the board trying to look on anything... Because I don't want the board trying to look on anything on the weekend or have our clerk working on Saturdays. So that's what we have to discipline ourselves with, okay? All right, with that said, we don't have anything else, we're going to go into executive session.
Is there a motion to go executive session for the appointment of compensation to the performance or dismiss those specific employees and for the sale and release of the program?
Moved by trustee Milton Peyton, second by trustee Brooks. I know it really don't really really make announcements, but I just wanna say this to our audience and our public, that I'm so proud of the inaugurations we had in Springfield and all the people that could attend, our representatives, it was our state reps, and you should have seen, we have the house now, I'm really happy about that, yay. And also our governor and our first African-American lieutenant governor. So I want round of applause for them, that was great. And I would, I'm sorry that I got, I received invitations to the Black Women's Mirror of the United States delegation to Cuba. I'll probably go there at the end, yes, they had their inaugurations. And Mayor Browser from Washington DC, got her invitation. And I'm just glad that things are going on around states and things are being done for women and for people of color. I'm really, really happy about that. We really, really need to see more of this going on. So again, everyone, I thank you for coming out tonight, and...
Madam Mayor?
We need a roll call to go to executive session.
Roll call?
Trustee Wilson? Trustee Brooks? Trustee Maxwell? Trustee Peyton?
And I brought you guys souvenirs from the inauguration. Here you go.